Okay. If you would stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. If you would, uh, join me in a quick prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here tonight. We ask that you be with us as we go about the business of the township. We ask that you'd help us to keep open minds and to be courteous of one another. We ask that you would return us home safely. And we give thanks to you. In your son's name we pray. Amen. All right, uh, the first item on here is the approval of the agenda. I don't want to motion because I'm going to, I guess, do I need to make a motion to move them? I'm gonna make a motion that we move the, uh, new business, um, to be before the pending business. And the reason why is because the new business, technically G1, will affect the pending business. Is that corrected? Okay, so I have a motion to swap pending business with new business. Any support?
I'll support it.
All right, we have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the approval of the minutes from the March meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Any support?
Support.
We have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Brief public comment. Is there anything that anybody wants to talk about that's not on the agenda? All right, we will go ahead and get into it. So for the new business, um, the text amendment request, Rockford Storage, the request to amend section 450, 23 dot 24, mini warehouse self-storage facility. Um, and I believe it is just one specific part of the text. Subsection J, correct, Ed? Um, and it is basically to allow for storage unit door locations to be on building road, uh, or facing building road. Currently, they're not allowed that way. Is there anything else to that application other than that, that you guys would like to expand upon? Go ahead. Yeah?
Well, thanks for being here tonight, guys. This has been a project we've been passionate about and working on for a while. And we've got a couple empty seats, but we've got a quorum tonight, so we're excited to present to you. Uh, we, we bring our best. My name is Jordan DeGraff. I've got my dad, Mike DeGraff, with me as well. Um, I'd also like to pay respects to my grandpa Roger, 'cause he was, uh, with us at the beginning with this site. Um, he's no longer living, but he was a big, um, passion for, for us 30 years ago, um, at this, at this property. We've also got Andy, just to help us answer any questions that you guys have. And then we've got Rob with Excel Engineering, uh, to be able to talk about our site plan and stormwater. Jeff, to answer your question, uh, yes, we are hoping to have the public hearing for the amendment of ordinance first. And then the second would, public hearing would be for the special land use to approve the three additional self-storage buildings on our existing self-storage site. And our desire is to have the planning commission view and vote on both of these items here this evening together. And then our hopes would be to have the board review both of those items, um, at their next meeting. Our site plan includes three new buildings. Uh, two of them will be traditional self-storage. The third one is gonna be accommodating, uh, indoor storage for RVs and boats. And this is gonna be done in a way that is a, is, it'll be a use that is not currently being offered anywhere else in the township in this way. And what I mean by that is-
Hold on, hold on. Don't get into your site plan stuff yet. Let's do the application for the amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. I'm here today, Jeff, so I'll, I'll skip that. I'd like to clear the air, and, and Jeff, you're welcome to cut me off again if this is something I should pass on. But I, I was hoping to clear the air just on the, um, uh, our presentation to the ZBA a couple months ago. We had the opportunity to present to the ZBA and request a variance. That variance was not granted. It was honestly my, my first time presenting or for a variance, both residentially and, and business. And, um, we were honestly a little bit confused in the application because of the typo that we mentioned. Um, on page three in section A, there was a sentence that read, quote, "Economic hardship and profit potential are considerations for demonstrating a unique and exceptional condition." Um, essentially, we read that and, uh, formulated a narrative. With that in mind, when we got to the ZBA, we very quickly realized, uh, with their patience and grace, that, um, that was not proper justification. And at that point in time, we realized that, um, this was not the, the route that we should have taken. And we would have withdrawn our application if we would have known that ahead of time. So, all of that to say, the amendment to the ordinance today is the proper route for seeking, um, our site plan approval today. We also think that it is important to know that we're not asking the planning commission to make a blind decision today just to amend the ordinance without knowing our intentions. We're coming in hand in hand with our site plan, so you can see exactly what we're hoping to do. You see our building orientation, you see the size of the buildings. We are simply just asking the planning commission, uh, for enough flexibility to be able to, um, uh, help us approve our site plan. We feel like this amendment to the ordinance is a win-win, because it gives the planning commission continued, um, authority to be able to, um, review our site plan today. But then it also continues to give the planning commission, uh, control and, and flexibility going forward with future projects. So, um, all of that to say, I'm gonna skip a couple of the things specifically geared to the site plan. Um, I'd like to introduce my dad, Mike, here, just to mention a couple other things regarding the ordinance. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. To be honest with you, it seems kinda strange to be here without Jim Scales. Uh, a lot of you have known Jim a long time. I've been around as long as Jim has been. And, uh, he and his wife have made a huge impact, uh, you know, in the Rockford area. And, uh, you know, I was shocked. In fact, Andy sent me an email, said that he just left his, I, I was out of the country. And he sent me an email saying he had passed. But, anyway, we were working on two other projects in another township with him. But I wanted to tell a real quick story about, about Jim that we know, kinda chuckle a little bit. But, yeah, you saw the rain here earlier tonight. We were, we were up at Cortland Township with a meeting. Jordan and I were there with Jim. And it was raining so hard, and nobody had any alternative but to walk in the building. And Jim, with a normal suit and tie, he didn't have a dry piece of clothing on his body when we walked into that meeting. And, uh, it was an interesting day. But, anyway, um, the site down here that we're talking about is our original site. We've owned it for 33 years. Uh, I've lived in township for 40 years. Um, it's been one of the premier businesses in Cannon Township. Uh, our customers who are generally Cannon Township residents, um, you know, they say it all. They provide, they've provided us with hundreds of Google reviews, uh, nearly perfect Google reviews. Uh, it's been a long road to get here. You know, we had to do a topo, wetlands evaluation, site design and engineering. We have an Eagle, uh, we did an Eagle application. We have an Eagle permit in hand to build what we have, what we're proposing. But I'm here to speak about J. J is, as you know, "Storage unit doors shall not face a public street right of way." It's unclear how or why this even got put in the ordinance. Remarkably, this only applies to one use, self-storage. Doesn't apply to anything else, to my knowledge. Ed may correct me, Edward may correct me, but, um, it discriminates against only one business in, in Cannon Township and one use. It's a local business. Uh, to our knowledge, this prohibiting door is facing a public road, is not mentioned in any other zoning category or use. Other types of similar businesses aren't confined to this requirement. Car sales lots, auto mechanic shops, truck terminals, warehouse. Storage doors are normally closed 95% of the time. Whereas a lot of businesses, you drive by, the doors are open, you see everything that's there, and they're kind of on site. And I'll just use a couple of examples. One glass design right over here, just a few years ago, they built a building, they got doors facing building road. In fact, I think their doors are gonna be quite a bit closer to building road than ours will be. Tom just built a building. This past, I don't know, I don't know if it's done yet or not, but he just built a building. He's got doors facing building road, facing the public right of way. I think we could agree that if we were located in the middle of a residential subdivision, it could be a good thing. But we're not. We're a business located in the outskirts of the township, on a state highway, in a property-zoned commercial with a 55 mile an hour speed limit. A high majority of the Cannon Township residents have never even gone past Ramsdale. It's just the nature of the beast. Everybody turns right, heads toward Grand Rapids. Furthermore, I've done some looking. Uh-oh, I don't have with me. I've done some looking. I essentially looked from the north- Northern Kent County. I looked at Lowell Township going north, all the way, everywhere. There's not a single township that has a restriction on doors facing a public road. Tyrone Township. Alpine Township. Cortland Township. Algoma. Salone. Lowell Township. Grattan Township. Virgens. Oakfield. Plainfield. Spencer. Grand Rapids Township. Nelson. Cascade Township. Spartig Township. Grand Rapids Township. And Ada Township. None of them have a restriction against having doors facing a public road. If this isn't a reason to allow doors facing a public road in this circumstance with reasonable screening, I don't know what is. Again, um, I'll repeat what I said earlier. I have no idea how it got put in there. Anyway, additionally, our parcel has a practical difficulty resulting from exceptional or extraordinary condition for narrowness, shilliness, shape, area of the land, unbuildable areas such as wetlands. We are dealing with some wetlands. Because of the wetlands to the north, the 50-foot setback from the road right of way, and the depth of the building necessary to park an RV in, in addition, the turning radiuses needed to be able to turn into the building, it's not feasible to move the building all the way up toward building road and put the doors on the north side. Additionally, for the last three decades, I've watched neighboring properties fill in their wetlands. A lot of people have. We could've done it. We didn't do it. The, uh, if we had, we wouldn't even be here talking about this, because we could put the building far enough back, because we would've filled it in. Anyway, for all of the above reasons, I believe any reasonable planning commission would be willing to amend J, which is, who knows where it came from and why it's even there, and allow us to have a building facing a public road with doors.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open this up. This is a public comment section, or a, a public, um, meeting. So if you wanna come up, state name, address, go ahead. This would be related to the text, the ordinance amendment. If there's no public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and- Feel free, come on up. What's that?
Tom, nice, 9260 Building Road. First of all, um, Mike brought up that I'm building buildings. My property is industrial. My doors face the road. And that is permitted in industrial, correct? That's why I was approved for it. Didn't need anything special, didn't need any variances to have doors, because I'm so industrial, not B1. Second thing I noticed Mike just said is that he said they don't fill in wetlands. Well, in 2018, discovery of fill that had been brought to the level out of the site for enlarging parking lot was filling in the wetlands. 11/14 of 2018.
We're cited by the township.
All right? So, that's the two things that he mentioned that I thought were, uh, needed to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Clarify if I've spoken anything. I, I think it, it's fair to say that Tom would consider us a competitor of, of us, of ours. Uh, we think that he offers a different service to the salute, uh, to the, to the area. Tom came in with his property and got a rezone from residential to industrial to be able to build these buildings. We saw the application. Um, we did not speak any negative words against his application when he came in a few months ago to be able to do that. We were in full support of what he was trying to do. But it did require a rezone, which was something that the planning commission had to consider to be able to do what he was hoping to do with his business. Uh, to address the 2018, um, we had an opportunity to be able to accept some fill on our site in 2018. And it was our understanding at that point in time that we did not need a, a full-blown site plan to be able to accept fill. We were doing it in an area that we truly believed was not wetlands. And, um, it was our understanding with the pre- previous, um, planning, uh, planner here at the township that, uh, we did need to, she, she told us that we did need to submit a site plan to be able to accept fill on the property. And that's when, uh, she contacted Eagle. They came out and inspected the property. There was never an official wetlands, um, delineation, uh, study, uh, done or permitted at that time. We didn't ask any questions, we didn't rebuttal, we just said, "That's fine, we'll hire an excavator and remove the fill." We removed the fill at our cost, we restored the land, we planted the trees that were required, the seedlings at that time that was asked of us. And we got a thumbs up from Eagle at that point in time to say, "Hey, you've got a clean slate moving forward." Obviously, with our site plan here today, we've gone back to Eagle and have said, um, "Hey, this is what we'd like to do with our site." We've, here's our site plan, here's our official wetlands delineation study. Um, what are we able to do? Rob's been very helpful in helping us communicate with Eagle, but we are in good graces with, with Eagle today. Clarification?
Yeah, it came to our attention that we couldn't, you know, we, we know we are gonna need a lot of fill there, so we thought we could get some fill. We were helping a local excavator. He was getting rid of some fill, we were taking some fill. We didn't, you know, we probably could've caused a stink and said, you know, and started fighting, but no, we just removed the fill. But, um, if you were to look at the situation today where that fill was put, the Eagle permit, the Eagle, the wetlands delineation, where we put that dirt is not considered wetlands. So, but, like I said, we removed it. And it is what it is.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? No? All right, I will go ahead and close the public comment.
Thoughts from you guys?
Any? Any questions for the applicant? Any thoughts on this?
One thing I would say is, uh, you know, I know what the zoning says, you can't have a door facing a street hardware. Worded, yeah, good, good idea. But, uh, if I go west about one lot, there's a gas station or a repair shop or whatever, which has doors and whatever facing building road, which I, basically is what you're talking about.
I would agree.
Yeah. Although, I do, I'm not-
The difference is the number. The, but the difference would be the number. I mean, two, three, four, okay.
So, but as far as changing the zoning, typically, we change the zoning when there's multiple requests about something. And we say, "Oh, that must be a problem." There's not been re, multiple requests of this type. And so, it's a little bit different to change the zoning, let's say, for one person or one business or whatever. Then typically, how we change the zoning between general zoning updates, and then a few years later, another general update. So, from that category, that viewpoint, it's a different type of request. The other side of the coin is, like I said, next door to you, you got garage doors on a, on a business that are very similar up and down, probably open more than yours are gonna be, just because of the nature of their business.
Thank you, Terry.
I have-
Go ahead.
Questions? I don't know if it's appropriate for us, the board, or, or, I just wonder, in response to the applicant's comments about, um, this is an unusual ordinance. Can you, do you have any insight on that? And do we have any anecdotal history about the purpose behind adding it?
The other thing that we need to consider is, um, looking at this as something that we do during the ordinance amendment, that we're talking about doing a full ordinance amendment towards the end of the year, instead of taking it out of context and doing it now, looking at one specific line, we could look at the whole B1 and industrial. I mean, obviously, we're gonna look at all the ordinances, but we may wanna consider doing it then, when it's more appropriate. And we can do surveys and have public comment and, and feedback, uh, from more business owners and stuff, versus, like you said, not enough requests right now. Or really anybody other than the applicant. I don't think that their application is wrong or doesn't deserve the attention. I just think that we should probably consider this, uh, when we do the entire ordinance amendment review.
And I know there was an, an issue with understanding how the, you apply for ZBA and stuff, but I don't like overriding what ZBA had already determined. Cause I just feel like we have due process for a reason. They said they didn't like it. I don't know. Eileen, can you explain more concept, content on why you guys chose not to approve it at ZBA?
Oh, gosh, I don't remember.
It was a while ago.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't recall. Okay.
The main reason we were denied the variance was because, um, we were not able to show that storage doors couldn't be faced in any other direction, um, for, for specifically building three. So it was the minimum variance required, needed section, that category. Um, from our standpoint, I mean, yes, somebody could build a 10 by 10 shed in that area and have doors facing north. But, um, this is a commercial piece of property. The question that we are asking the planning commission to consider is, uh, the way that the ordinance, the text in the ordinance is written right now, it, it provides no flexibility for site-on-site evaluation. We are saying, uh, would the planning commission consider, um, allowing a text to be in there that allows for specific flexibility for our site? When we get into our site plan, we will show that we are offering evergreen trees as screening and buffering. There's a lot of different ways that we are going to offer, um, offer, um, a reasonable, uh, a reasonable reason for, for, for our site to be able to accommodate doors facing building road. An additional reason being, um, to the south of us, it faces state highway. There's B1 zoning, uh, to the south of us, to the east of us, and to the west of us. Does that help answer or refresh your memory about the, the variance?
Well, I'm gratified that I was handed a copy of the minutes and I was not on the-
Oh, you were, I'm sorry.
That's why I don't remember it, because I, I was no longer, or I wasn't present or wasn't there.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were present for the ZBA.
I appreciate that explanation. Um, so-
Sorry, uh, the other piece of this is, um, we, we would respectfully ask that we not delay this. We're in a construction season right now. The, the summer construction season is, is short for Michigan anyways. This has been something that we've been, uh, that Edmund has been very patiently working with us on this for, for over a year. Um, we are the ones coming to the planning commission today. We have paid the application fee, we have put in the work. We're, we are respectfully asking for, uh, for consideration tonight and not to delay something six or nine months out. Is that helpful? Okay, thank you both.
Good.
Thank you.
Terry, in answer to your question, that this question's never come up before, there's a very real reason for that. It doesn't affect anybody in this township but us. We're the only ones in this entire township that that line affects. It doesn't affect any other businesses. Tom mentioned it doesn't affect him. He could have doors in the front. It's because doors are allowed in the front. Every single zoning category, every single use except self-storage. It's the only one. And then, the other thing regarding the, the building, yeah, we've got a few more doors. Really, there are not that many doors. We have a few more doors, but we have to deal with turning radiuses for fire trucks and for RVs to get in there. And we, we have to be able to use that, that setback area in the front along Building Road in order to make that work to get into a building. It doesn't make economic sense for anybody to build a four-stall building. You, you just can't. You can't, you can't do the site work to put up such a small building. And the building we're putting up is not by RV standards, it's not that big. Is it, what is it gonna accommodate? 15 customers? I, I don't remember exactly. But, but it's about- Yeah, it's not on that either. Anyway, it's not gonna accommodate a lot of customers, but we're the only ones that this affects.
You said it's not that many doors. How many doors is it? It's five times the amount of all the examples that you guys have said. It's 18 doors. Yeah, so I consider that quite a bit more. Well, I understand that, but everybody else in the township that you've been talking about who has doors facing, they're minimal. They're three to four at max. That's not a lot of linear frontage or just a wall of garage doors. You guys are talking about 18 of them. That's quite a bit.
Theoretically, um, the glass shop down, um, closer towards the Acorn Reef Shale Store, I mean, they chose to build a three-bay, um, stored, uh, storage building. They could've built something with 18 doors facing south, and it could've been called something different. Could've been called warehousing. Uh, a, an auto repair store could've built a building and have 18 doors facing south. I don't know if they would, but our use is the only one that's confined to that restriction. To, to my dad's point, the, this building is also setback quite a bit further than the typical 50-foot setback that is required for, um, for a building. The southeast corner of building three is setback 90 feet from Building Road, and the southwest corner is setback 165 feet. So, yes, to Jeff's point, there are 18 doors, uh, but we're also showing you our site plan today. A lot of self-storage buildings might have 75 doors or more than that. We are, we are doing 18, and it, the building is setback quite a bit from Building Road. We are also providing screenage with evergreen trees. Thank you.
Other comments?
I think there may be another public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. I agree.
Could I respectfully respond to that?
We need to talk about the text amendment, not about the different site plans. I mean, I want to make sure that we're staying on course with this is a text amendment, not about site plans and the type of buildings that are on other ones. I'd like to stay focused on this because this will allow us to get to your site plan. Go ahead.
Ed, is it true that this is the only business that this ordinance does affect? Okay. And what type of precedent does it set as a planning commission if we text amend this bypassing a variance for ZBA? Does that set any type of precedent?
So it's a challenge, I think, because the ordinance was probably designed for some reason to prevent forward-facing doors and we can only guess, but as reasonable people that might be to prevent, you know, all this, you know, seeing traffic coming in and out, seeing people doing things in and out and just the disruption of that and the visual like unpleasantness of that. I don't mean no disrespect for that kind of business, that's just how it operates. And so I don't know, I mean, is there any other purpose for that except to prevent, you know, an unsightly, you know, scene as you're driving by? The only reason I raise that question is if, if that's the purpose of the ordinance, then the, seems to me the countervailing thing is you, you turn the doors the other way and now you have just brick or siding for a very long period of time or distance, whatever that is. And that's not that attractive either. Again, no disrespect to a business. That's like we are looking at a warehouse, you know, warehouse kind of thing. And if the purpose is really to prevent that visual screen of movement, then I, I'm not offended by a green space being permitted in there that would block that activity provided the planning commission would have control over that and it might actually be an improvement from driving by and just seeing like a warehouse. Because if, if the doors are the other way, that we would not have the ability then to require evergreens or require birmingham or require other improvements that may effectively do a screen and actually provide a greener visual as you're driving by. But again, I'm guessing at what the ordinance was attempting to accomplish and maybe there's another rationale that I haven't thought of.
Well, and it works in this space possibly, but what if there's another place in Cannon Township where we would for sure not want it to face the road as well? And so amendment ordinance is kind of tricky or not amendment changing the ordinance.
But would the reason for it not, I mean, the reason for it not facing the road is, would that change? I mean, if.
Is it a building road thing, Ed, or is it a B1 thing? Sure.
Jim Scales, or I'm assuming it was Jim Scales, provided text to address this, that it's not an act, it doesn't have to be an actual amendment change that all of a sudden we can, but we can with planning commission approval with proper screening. And that's what we're proposing in our site plan is proper screening. And will you see the doors? A little bit, but again, you're driving by at 55 and eventually as things grow, you might not see anything. But, you know, you look at an order, you know, go up and down Bostwick Lake area, you know, automotive garages, they got tons of cars sitting out there. With storage, you generally don't have all kinds of stuff sitting out there. And, you know, generally, if you were to drive down there today, I think you'd have to agree that it probably looks better than most everything down in that Bostwick Lake area. You know, if the grass isn't falling, it's the grass is cut on a regular basis, everything has always looked sharp, which unfortunately for 30, 40 years, I can't say that about a lot of our neighboring businesses.
One final thought, this is the three bay unit for the glass design place that they, they built. To my dad's point, they have a lot of extras stored outside as well, the shelving, pallets, clutter, van, storage containers. Yes, we have 18 doors, but it's gonna be 18 doors, that's it. There's gonna be nice evergreen trees planted in front of it, the doors are gonna be closed, somebody might visit it for a half an hour to pull out their motor home and then they're gone. It's a very quiet use, it's very friendly. You're not gonna see the clutter. Thank you.
My only concern with the text amendment is we're getting into the weeds then because if we allow it now, we're gonna be arguing over landscaping. I'm not a landscape expert, I don't know crap about trees, don't really want to become an expert on it and we had this issue with other site plans where we came up with a plan and it didn't turn out well at all and we're still having issues with that particular business, but it's for other reasons, but it was that same thing where we gave approval of the site plan based off of a landscape plan that we gave permission for, I believe, the zoning administrator to approve and not saying that he did a bad job, but we're not experts on it and I don't want, I don't necessarily want to complicate an ordinance with clauses like this that are gonna make it even more difficult to get something approved. Not against it, but I just, I don't like the idea of, of making it another condition for the planning commission to approve something based off of landscape plans. I'm open to a text amendment, but I think, I also think that it should be done when we do the entire ordinance amendment, when we do the review. So we're not taking it out of context because we could be looking at it from a B1 standpoint with a special land use allowing it, or would we be looking at it from a industrial zoning use? Because if you look at the ordinances, it's the SL, I mean, regardless if it's industrial or B1, it has to have an SLU, correct, Ed? Right. So, I mean, even if we did a text amendment to lock garage doors, it's also conditional on if they get an SLU, which I think is just complicating it even further. But I'm not opposed to reviewing it, I just think it needs to be done when we do the entire ordinance. That's just my two cents. Any thoughts?
I think we should separate text amendment from the site plan, do that, do different steps. Let's say we, whatever we recommend goes to board. And let's say we said yes to the text amendment and they say no. But if it goes to the board and we've already said, oh, the site plan looks good, never, I think it puts a little different pressure on the board too to say yes to the text amendment.
I don't believe we can approve.
They should be, they should be separated.
I don't think we can approve the site plan without the text amendment approval, correct, Ed? It has to be conditional.
Right.
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 Correct.
Did you hear me?
We did, but.
There's, there's three buildings being proposed in the site plan, if I remember correctly. One of them, only one of them would be impacted by the change to the ordinance, not the other two. Cause only one of them has doors facing building road, the others do not.
So then are we omitting building three from the site plan?
That's up to you as a planning commission. My only comment was that it doesn't mean that you can't go forward with the site plan, at least you can with two of the buildings.
Well, right now, the site plan would be not conforming.
If you denied the, the.
Right nowadays.
What I'm saying is that you would be able to look at two of the buildings, not three of the buildings.
Correct. So we wouldn't, I mean, that's up to them if they want us to keep going with it with just the two buildings and take number three completely out of it.
So, so, so you, what you're suggesting is that you would just deny the whole site plan because of that one non-conformity of the.
I'm not saying anything because we're not talking about the site plan yet.
Right.
A question for Ed, what is the source of the alternative language? Okay. Well, my thought is the flexibility that is introduced by the text amendment is a challenge because then the weight is on us to make a responsible decision about how to exercise that flexibility. But I think it could ultimately result in an improvement that we wouldn't otherwise have by just having a building with doors facing the other way that I'm sure your building's gonna be nice, but seeing trees and birmingham, because we see trees and birmingham in a lot of different places to just reduce the, the impact of commercial operations. And we would have the flexibility to implement effective screening. Even, you know, it's, it's one thing to provide, but it's also to maintain and I see the word maintain isn't in here and I think that's sometimes a problem when we require something and then it dies a year or two later. So I think that, I think that could be a way to even improve it to make sure that we've not allowed something that then we just have no ability, that has no ability to enforce. I mean, I, I, I agree with you, Jeff, I like rules and concreteness, but if the purpose was to screen, provide a visual screen and the only, I don't know that the only way to do that is to put the door on the other side if you have an effective screen that's green, you might reach the same result.
I agree. That's why, like, I'm not opposed to reviewing this, I think we should just do it when we do the entire ordinance, when we can actually look at the B1 use or the B1 area, because this may be something that we want to put into multiple, multiple different zoning areas.
Northern County. That has this in their ordinance?
I don't find it strange because I don't know their ordinances, I don't know where the mini storage lots are. I don't, I mean, if I did research and I could find some similarities and stuff like that, yeah, I might find it strange, but I don't know where they are. I don't know, I mean, I'll be honest, I can't, I don't even know where any of them are other than the ones that you guys have. I don't look, I don't look for them though.
Yeah, many of them are in more of a residential area. You know, they're not on a state highway, they're not on a busy road, they're not in any area that people don't really care a whole lot, you know, plus the fact that we're at the outskirts of the township.
Well, and to quote Steve Grimm, we're in Cannon Township, we do things differently. So I don't know that having a different ordinance is really that big of a deal, but I obviously, there's gotta be a reason why I wish we had that anecdotal history, because that would be interesting to know what our.
It's our main artery of the township for traffic and, and it's the one thing that everybody sees because it goes right through the township. I mean, we've talked about years ago, I think it was pre-COVID, doing a Bostick Lake. Help me, Terry, you remember this, we were looking at the whole Bostick Lake corridor and trying to improve the, just the unsightliness of it and trying to make it more eye appealing. It never had any traction. I mean, a lot of people like the idea, but when it came down to it, we can't force people to make changes to their buildings and stuff and we shouldn't do that. But it's the main ar, that's the only thing I can do is it's because it's the main artery. It's, it's more of a site thing.
Jeff, time is a concern for us. Terry, you brought up a good, good suggestion to make a vote tonight and then to get additional feedback from the board next month. Respectfully, we've, we've worked with Edmund for quite a long time with this. We, I think getting feedback from the board gives them another opportunity to review it, but we respectfully do not feel like it's, it's needed to delay it until a full site, full, full review is needed. I, you talked about full ordinance review, we are the ones bringing this to the table today, we're asking for, for, to help us get the ball rolling.
Any thoughts?
I don't know all the zoning and rules yet, but can we make it conditional for a text amendment just to this property even though it's not a variance? Very nice to meet you.
I can read it. It says, "Storage, and storage unit doors shall not face a public street right of way. The planning commission may waive or modify this requirement if the property located across the right of way is zoned for commercial or industrial use. And if attractive landscaping, screening, fencing, or birmingham, or accommodation of a design approved by the planning commission is provided to screen the view of the doors from the right of way. Chain link fencing with privacy slats is not an acceptable form of screening for the waiver."
Respectfully, one more clarification, we are not coming in today asking to remove this ordinance altogether. That verbiage that Jim Scales came up with gives the planning commission a lot of flexibility for our site and for future projects.
Well, and then one more thing to add, this only affects us, even though you may change the ordinance slightly to still give yourself traction with landscaping, et cetera, we're the only ones in this township it affects. The only other people it could affect is somebody else that wants to put a self-storage in. But as open as Cannon Township is to development, it might be pretty hard for somebody to ever do that. So it affects us, we're the only ones.
Any other thoughts, comments, anybody want to make a motion? Talk about it more?
You want a motion?
Feel free.
I'll make a motion that we recommend our board that we approve, I think it's called version one of the text amendment, or whatever it is, the longer one, not the, not the real short one, but the longer one.
Subsection K?
That's what I think, that's my motion is to recommend that the board that that be approved.
It would be, it would be the alternative language, not subsection K, it would be alternative language J.
I'll get it on page or not.
Thank you. We have a motion, you guys want to discuss it all?
I'll second that motion.
Just a, a point of clarification, I don't know if our ordinances as a whole, because I don't have them memorized, also have the maintenance piece in there, but if some of the frustration that we've had in approving other plans or some things provided but not maintained, perhaps we would, subject to, you know, Brad or others weighing in, we would also say is provided and man, and maintained so that there's some, just a sense of continuity of obligation.
Would you be open to that amendment to your motion? Would you be open to that amendment to your motion?
Oh, that's a friend, that is a friendly.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, we also have support. Ed, you wanna do a roll call on it?
Support.
Broad.
Yes.
Man, uh, Twyman?
No.
Can you explain why?
I just think this needs to be done during the broader review of the ordinance. We have a motion and it is carried. Now we can get to, uh, the next item, Mr. Randy Schmidt, if you wanna come up. We'll do yours real quick, so we don't keep you here for the longer site plan review.
For, uh, uh, having me, uh, essentially what, what I'm looking at is. Um, just building a, uh, larger accessory building on, uh. My property right across the street from my house on, uh, Davies Drive. And the rationale for that is, uh, um, boats and so forth right now are. You know, they get bigger and you can't fit them in those small garages anymore. And so I'm just looking at, uh, just a larger footprint, so I can get my, my equipment in there.
Anybody have any questions for him? Go ahead.
Ed, can you elaborate when you said no parties for one of your conditions? Like what is, I mean, if he wants to have. Commercial use, but he could have like a graduation party. Could he have like the Lake Association Halloween party?
She's gonna get you on a condition.
No. It has to be like, okay, got it. No hidden agendas there.
No hidden agendas. Somebody have any questions for him? I think it's pretty straightforward, um.
I did have a comment, maybe it's for a question, maybe it's more for Ed. Is this a circumstance where there has to be a common ownership and a, a deed covenant?
Correct.
Okay, so we verified there's that restrictive covenant, okay.
Is this a public comment for him? We'll go ahead and open the public comment up to this, if anybody wants to come forward and speak on this. We'll close the public comment then, if there's nobody. I don't have any concerns with it. I know what he's trying to do, I've seen it in the area. It, it fits, I mean, there, and there's a lot of people that wanna do this in the area, I don't think it's a bad thing. Um, yeah, I don't have any questions or comments on it, you guys?
Yeah, I got one, one question. It's a, it's a fairly high building, fourteen feet, and you got windows on the second floor. Is there any future thought to doing something up on a, a second level? Or is that just gonna stay like an open bar?
Any other thoughts, comments? I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that the planning commission recommend approval of special land use to the township board. Um, with the condition that the structure is not to be used for commercial events.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, we have support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you, Andy. Now we can get to the fun part. You wanna come up and explain your site plan? All right.
These guys came to me quite some time ago and, uh, we've looked at the site. It's a very interesting site, because the top part where they have the existing storage today is way high on the hill. Uh, we need to provide stormwater detention for the, the impervious area that we're proposing all the roof. We've put that in the most, that's low area and, uh. You have to have stormwater in the low area, so that's just the way it is. The reason for that is, is because of that low area, um, we need to provide the detention there. The only thing that we're really doing in the bottom of it is, uh, it's gonna be stormwater instead of. Just, uh, wetlands that water could flow through, and then we're putting a berm that's crossing. So I suspect, and that's why I think the EGL East was quick to approve it, that. Detention area as we go, so we've had that permit in hand for, I think, over a year. And, uh, that permit's good for five years. They need to do that work before then, or else we gotta go through that process again. We've been talking about this building here. The, the township engineer noted that the floodplain is high on this. The, the north side of Belding Road. I understand where that is, but I'm gonna just say this, just so you have it in your pocket, I'm, we're not gonna argue it. But the FEMA floodplain stops at the very north edge of that culvert. And if you look at the floodplain slope of the creek, it jumps up like, so that water flows on Belding Road. And I don't, if you look at the area upland and you do some real rough hundred year calks. That floodplain is just the tail end of a study that probably should have never included that. So if you've get, uh, this is why I wanna tell you this, because if you get other clients that are saying. Or other residents in the area upland of Belding Road that are saying, hey, I'm in a floodplain, I can't believe it. I bet there's many, many property owners that are gonna run into that situation. We have an easy solution here, we can raise the site up. With the dirt, the dirt, raise the site up costs money, but it will cost less than trying to analyze. And work with FEMA to adjust their floodplain elevation, so. Noted, we raised this floor to be a foot above the floodplain, the foot. The floodplain's at eighty fifty point zero, our floor's at eighty fifty one feet above sea level. And the road grade out here is, um, for the most part. Even by raising it above the floodplain. So when you're looking at that protective screening and what can you really see? I think that even four foot high plantings are gonna hide much of that building and those garage doors. Because just the way the lay of the land works. So if the trees or plantings are four feet high, you're up at six sixty. The garage doors are probably somewhat similar to that height-ish. I am welcome to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, we appreciate the first text amendment. I wanna keep this simple, I think you guys have all researched this project quite well. I'm assuming you've got a few questions, but I'm certainly happy to answer anything that you might have.
You wanna go through your review and, or Kevin, whoever wants to go first over there? If there's anything that you guys wanna highlight, this is. This is a special land use application, so we have to have public comment again, but they're having to, can you explain why they're having to apply?
Township didn't have any special land uses for mini warehouse storage. The special land uses weren't added until nineteen ninety-six, at which point this broader, this business was already established. Now that they're coming to expand, they need to file for it and get it approved, special land use due to the expansion.
Is there anything in your review that you wanna highlight?
No, I, pretty straightforward, it's just a contingent on the board passing the text amendment. Since the garage doors will be facing building road, within that, two buildings, three buildings with one facing Belding Road. Nothing major in mind.
Kevin, is there anything you wanna address in yours?
Yeah, real, really just one thing, the, uh, driveway and accessibility and the layout. Related to that building number three. I brought it up and I think it showed up in the fire chief's comments too about accessibility to the sides and the back. Of that building, the way that it's laid out right now, or on the. Site plan that I had a few months ago when I last looked at this is. It looks like based on proposed contours that on the east and north and west sides. So sides and back, that the grade immediately drops down with a steep slope toward those wetlands. There's a fence that goes along that east property line that goes right to the building corner. So the sides and the back of the building are not accessible at all for firefighting. So in the event of an emergency, that would be, that was my concern that I identified. I, I think it showed up in the fire chief's comments that way as well to provide access to the sides and the back of the building. And that's really the only thing that I had that could result in a site layout adjustment.
Thank you. Is there anything in the attorney memo that you'd like to address?
No, I think Ed pretty well covered it. This is a special land use, so as long as you're satisfied, all special land use standards are met for a mini warehouse. Um, you'd have to go through all of those, find that they're met. And then, um, it, it is conditional upon the township board approving the text amendment that you just recommended.
How does that work, Ed? Because we can't. Really approve a site plan based off a text amendment, cause if they approve it, wouldn't we then have to review the landscaping? So the landscape plan is for the driveway entrance, but nothing in front of, am I, did, am I missing something? I've got one page. Do you know, do you know what it was titled? What's it titled?
So quickly to address that, if, if you were to approve the site plan with this landscaping, then if the text amendment is approved by the board. Then they would not have to come back, because you would have already approved that landscaping.
What is proposed? Just evergreen trees? Any specific sizes or anything? Any specific sizes or anything? I couldn't, I couldn't read it, I couldn't, sorry for. And I would assume where it says trees in the parking lot, that's the current stuff, right? No, but I mean, we're. In the crosshatch of the parking lot, it says trees, I would assume that's the current vegetation, correct?
Is there a way to work a different, uh, you, you got this long row. Uh, actual different trees, we have some height either back of it a little or forward or something, give it a little height and a color. Cause I know you're in a tight area. Cause otherwise we're looking at a green wall. Of, I don't know what kind of shrubs, yeah.
They have to have, they have to have more than one species, yeah. You've proven my point. It's usually not the PC though, that's my point.
We also have the opportunity to require a berm, which could affect the size of the landscape, so. It, it would seem to me that we would, we would want a landscaped architect to provide a plan that we could review and approve. Subject to our review and approval, now I don't know how that means you come back here, but I'm certainly not comfortable. Uh, agreeing that we're gonna exercise discretion to require a landscape plan, but not have one. And, um, I heard you say, well, all you need is a four foot tree, well, maybe we don't, maybe we need a seven foot tree. Or maybe we need a berm plus a four foot tree, so I would really like to see a plan on that, because this is a. If the, the board approves this, this is the quid pro quo. That we've, we're trying to protect. Yeah, I don't know, fifteen feet sounds wide, but I'm not a tree person, so I would really like to hear a tree person say that. That's gonna, that's gonna do the cover. that's gonna, that's gonna do the cover. Does, does the discretion afforded if the board approves the township amendment allow us discretion to do something different from what's in chapter twenty-six? So we could require more?
Technically, I think our text amendment would. Is that our discretion? We could require more or be more lenient.
Right.
Be kinda nice to put a sidewalk too.
You want a bike path too?
Yeah.
And I'll just add.
I was joking.
Article twenty-six. Sorry, article twenty-six of your ordinance does allow for you to modify it anyway. At your discretion, you just, there's provisions in here that provide for that, if they provide justification for modification from the, the landscape standards in the plan. So you have, you have that flexibility, both under the text amendment and under article twenty-six.
I'm gonna open this up for public comment now. If anybody would like to come forward, ask questions or give their opinion, please feel free, just state your name and address.
Hi, Brooke Evans, seventy-one forty, Lower Court. Several questions around the landscaping plan. I think it's woefully inadequate, but what's the elevation of the floor of the unit compared to the height of the road?
Eight fifty-one versus eight fifty-five, I think you said something like that?
The long building on the east side of the property is roughly five feet lower than the road. The road does slope, so there's places where it's a little. So it, it, I mean, pictorially you have less than one tree per door. Obviously, that's not what you intend, but that's where I think the, the planning seems to be lacking quite a bit. A single row of trees is not a screen. You need to stagger it. I think different heights, there are textures, all the things that you guys were talking about. And can tolerate exhaust fumes from the highway. So a landscape plan is what I would wanna see before I would approve this.
Thank you. Any others? Come on up.
Okay. Well, first I have a question. Is there a special land use permit on this property now?
Not right now, no.
Okay, well then how are they storing things outdoors? Because you need a special land use to store stuff outdoors.
That would be an Ed question. I don't know when that started or.
Well, I own a piece of property on Tiffany that was purchased in nineteen ninety-two. And it was the sales contingent on a special land use for storage. And I have receipts from two thousand and ninety-two up until two thousand and seventeen for fifty dollars a year that I paid for special land use. So that had I have the receipts in here, I can show you. So if they had got one for that property for outside storage, they should have proof of it because they would have been charged for it. Okay, well, I have the receipts here if you'd like to look at them. Chris James issued them and, and Don Osborne got it and my dad bought the property. So that, I'm just wanting to clear that up because I feel like there's already one in place there because when the property was first a self-storage unit, they didn't, couldn't store things outside. And then all of a sudden they started storing things outside. And camper showed up and things like that. And I'll be honest with you, it didn't really affect me, so it wasn't that big a deal. As Jordan did say, I'll just give you my history. I've been in business for thirty-six years. I've been a township person for fifty-six years. So I have a lot in common with them and I'm not opposed to the storage. The first plan we saw in December had three new storage buildings. Doors on the side, individual units, did not have a boat storage facility, okay? And I'm no different than you guys because every time someone's come up here and when Cassidy wanted to do self-storage across the street from you in the strip mall, you guys were against it because it affected your business. When Dave Vister wanted to build a storage building on Ramsdale and lease them out like you wanted to now, you were against it. You wrote a letter against that. I talked to Dave Vister yesterday. You sent a letter to the township that you were against it. Okay, that's either here, that's either here, neither here nor there. What I'm getting at is that I feed my family out of my business too. Okay, all right, I will. I feed my family out of my business too. And I don't think that I'm zoned industrial, it's a different zoning. So my tax dollars are going to rezone so we can put a storage building for boat and camper in B-one, which is not designed for, so they can compete against me. And I just don't, I have, I have an issue with that. The other thing I'm really shocked that no one's brought up. This site plan, this property doesn't, is not conducive to this layout. It's not big enough to try to get down in there. The driveway is less than forty feet from the fence to the edge of the road. Okay? You pull in there with a pickup truck, which is twenty feet long. You got a twenty-foot boat, the trailer's gonna be twenty-five feet long, you're already hanging out in the road. Okay? So let's make, put some bigger units in there. Let's put forty-five foot stalls in there. So we could have a thirty-foot travel trailer with a twenty-five foot pickup truck. So now we're sixty-five, we're hanging out on the building road. Not to mention, it's less than a hundred yards from the intersection of Ramsdale, which after Ramsdale is. Majority of the accidents in the township happen at Ramsdale. And I'm surprised nobody's brought this up from a safety concern. Mike himself said, when you want the doors, cars are going by at fifty-five miles an hour, they don't even see it. It's a main highway, it's a main thoroughfare, people are whizzing by there. So we're gonna stop, track trucks, trailers, campers, motorhomes on building road for people to navigate around? Doesn't seem like a very good idea to me. The other thing is, they say there's a need for this. Jeff Lamborn, talked to him this afternoon. For, he has seven storage units on the back of the old Marina building road next to Acme Tire, the old Bostick Marine. And two of them are still empty and he's had them for two years. There's a need, people wanna do what Randy's doing, they wanna build the place and have their own place. I don't know if it's a need to have an individual unit. And like I said, this is the personal, Mike wanted to put storage units in there and things like they're doing now. I wouldn't say anything because I wouldn't care. But I feel like we're gonna rezone properties so I can create a competitor. Plus, what if they don't rent? Are we gonna have plumbers in there? One man show, a builder, gonna have them doing woodworking in there? Gonna have Amazon trucks coming in there and delivering stuff during the day, UPS trucks? They built them, they're gonna rent them to somebody. If they don't fill them up with boats and campers, they're gonna run them to somebody. So I think you really need to address the traffic issue and the problem that's gonna, that could potentially be, especially as close it is to Ramsdale. So, yeah, I'm against it and for the reasons I told you. So it's not personal. If it wasn't Mike here, I'd be saying the same thing to somebody else that's doing it. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment about that. Obviously, it's sour grapes. Tom has not liked us in this township for a long time. So that's what it is, pure and simple. From a traffic standpoint, storage units contribute eight trips per day, per hundred units. That's what they contribute. A lot of stores, people don't go see their stuff for a year, year and a half sometimes. So traffic is not an issue. You know, you, you come, you, you drive by there, you hardly ever see a car there.
So there's no issue to have a travel trailer sticking out of the building road when they're waiting for the gate to open. The other thing is there's no sour grapes. There's sour grapes maybe because there's been some deceitful thing, I, whatever. I don't, there's no sour, like I said, I'd be saying this no matter who it was. So I don't think the woe was me attitude is really what should be at heart here. That, you know, I'm picking on them because I have sour grapes. Thank you.
Is the gate and the entrance plan to stay the same? Is that something we could check with them, dat on? See if they have any concerns? I mean, I, I understand the concern with it because yeah, especially if somebody's, as they said, most people that are gonna use this are coming from the other direction. They're gonna be coming, heading east and they're gonna try to turn left into there. And if that gate's not open, yeah, they're sticking out of the road. If they've got a travel trailer or, or anything and they're over so many feet. Right, what was it? The gate probably was something added after the use though, wasn't it? Right.
Well, I was just thinking about the layout on, on how you have that one building. And I understand, I love the text amendment idea for having the doors open on this side. But is there any other? You know, we only get to redo each parcel one time, right? And I feel like what you guys have right now, it does look really nice. I assume the architect looked to make sure there was no way you could get the more all-symmetrical. It has to have that one weird angle for the sixth building.
You wanna take Mike's phone with you?
Yeah.
There we go. So this building, this corner is at the front setback, so that's kind of why we can't pull it all the way to the road. We can't get closer than this line here. The idea is, is you can take this and you can turn around and then you go back to whatever you need to do. And honestly, some of these things, they can, they'll pull off and have their own little way to get in there without, depending on the size of the trailer, obviously, but they would probably put the biggest vehicles on this end and the smaller stuff over there. So the same thing with fire access, they can get down and turn around here. We've laid that template out to make that work.
Can you speak to the fire marshal's observation on that, that corner there?
Yeah, they, he, based on what I've just heard, the fire inspector wants to be able to get a man around the end. So the fence is blocking that, that's easily fixed.
A fence or, or a man or a truck though?
Usually it's, you have to be able to pull, you, a truck pulls to a certain distance and you can haul the hose a hundred and fifty feet. So if you can get to this corner, a hundred and fifty feet and a hundred and fifty feet from this corner, and if they're overlapping, then the, they meet the fire inspection code. I don't think you have hydrants in this area, right? If there were hydrants in the area, it's four hundred feet from the hydrant where the truck pulls the hose as the truck drives and then a hundred and fifty feet, both directions. We will work with them to get that to work. We, that, that fence can just be moved with, or have a gate in it. Usually the rule is you gotta be able to reach two sides. So yeah, so I think from that end, we should be fine. But does that answer your question, why it's at that weird angle? If we put it this way, then you don't have the bigger turnaround for those bigger, the fire truck, the trailers. And that goes back to, why is this here? Well, that's the low spot. Yeah, it does drive downhill further with the, especially since we had to raise this a foot above the floodplain, so. If this were a problem, I'm sure they would move the gate. I mean, that, that's not, I mean, nobody wants truck hanging over the edge with trailers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Could, to that last point about the gate, could the applicant speak to how much space there is from the white line along building road to the gate relative to the size of trailers that could get in this third building, which is, I see forty-five feet long total, so it could probably fit a forty-foot trailer in it. Is there even that amount of space from the white line, which is the edge of traffic to the gate where the keypad is to let them in?
I think the distance between this and the two pavements here, it's about forty-five feet base on scale. And I think this is shoulder, I think too. But I think that's ways around that one is you just move it back, plus have it open at certain times. Because it's not like a people accommodate any time of day.
One, one thing to mention as well, the two normal self-storage buildings, those are gonna be residential type customers that are coming in with moving van or minivan or pickup truck. That's gonna, that's the majority of the customers that I was saying. Yes, we're talking about eighteen days over here, but those are just the ten customers that are navigating. And that may occasionally disappear once a month, so. The customers don't have to go up to the gate though.
Called EZ Code and other things where they actually push a button on their cell phone. So they could be out there in the street on building road, push a button and the gate will open for them.
The gate will be a concern, obviously. My question's more towards the SLU application, Ed. Does this mean outdoor storage goes away or are they adding that to the application as well?
Oh, yeah, they could, I don't know if they're proposing to remove it or if they're proposing to keep it, but it should be part of the special land use because any non-conforming use will be destroyed by the fact that they're changing it now. So they would have to have it be part of their special land use if they're going to continue it. Otherwise, if they're gonna discontinue the outside storage, then it wouldn't be an issue. Well, I, so I'd, I'd say the legal non-conforming use by the fact that they are amending and changing the site, they're expanding it, therefore it, an expansion destroys a legal non-conforming use. So from the township's perspective, I would say the non-conforming use is destroyed by the fact that they're doing that now. So I guess if they're gonna continue it, it has to be part of the special land use.
Cause it would be part of the site plan, obviously, the location where it's at, we have to account for, correct?
It would need to be on the site plan, yeah.
Which it looks like it's over to the east or the west side? Is there any setback issues with that? Is there a volume issue? A percentage?
So if you look at the plan here, there is outdoor storage space though.
Well, I understand, they're moving it. Is there a? Is there a text stating a limit to it or? You do have it over there right now on the west, on the west side?
Yes. Jeff, just to clarify, there's storage here right now.
Right.
That'll all go away when these buildings. There's also storage here. This is what we're proposing to stay, but all the rest of this would go.
Is that something that we can limit? The number of spots for outdoor storage as part of the condition to the SLU?
I think we need to look at, does outdoor storage even a permissible special land use in the B one district? And I haven't looked at that. Um, I know there's an outdoor storage accessory to an industrial use in your ordinance. I don't see, I don't know if there's one for in the B one district.
So that would possibly have to go away?
Yeah, so I, I think the outdoor storage has to go away.
Can I address that? Going back to day one, Ned Stewitts, who built this, he had outdoor storage.
But it's a non-conforming use right now?
No, I understand that. We always had outdoor storage. It became a question in two thousand twenty when Trish Anderson was the planner and Paul LeBlanc was, I guess, the consultant planner, or I'm not sure which. We had a meeting with them and they had some concerns and did not want to make, they wanted to make sure it wasn't expanded. They basically said, we're fine with the outdoor storage, but they wanted a topo and they wanted a topo that showed all of our parking spots so that they had a benchmark, so it couldn't grow.
Well, I understand that, but it's still a non-conforming use. And once you apply for a new site plan, I mean, that make, that makes it go away. You would have to reapply for it. I think this is gonna be one of the conditions of the site plan, though. If it's a non-conforming use, I mean, we can't add that to the, the SLU legally, can we? Especially if it's not allowed in the B one district.
Yeah, I mean, we can't add it as a non-conform, you can't, you can't add it as a special land use, cause it's not a permitted special land use. The argument that they're making is that the non-conforming use is not destroyed by their application. Um, I think the case law supports that if you expand the use, you're destroying the non-conforming use. It doesn't continue. And we'd be happy to listen to, you know, if they have a legal argument to support why they think the non-conforming use isn't destroyed, we can look at that, but uh, I think that it is.
I think I'm ready to make a motion.
I got a quick, quick question. Where you come in off of, uh, Building Road, looking at that drawing, your width looks narrower than across the street. You've got long vehicles. Why wouldn't you open that up a little bit? Give them more space to pull a turn either way? I know you've got an interest there now.
There is.
Yeah, but wouldn't it make sense to open it up a little more?
Anything that we do can only be done as if M dot approves it and, and if there's, I can't commit to things that I haven't gone through.
I'm just looking at a long vehicle and it's gonna pull a one eighty.
That will work. I'm sure of it a hundred percent because we can turn around.
Yeah, to get down there, they gotta pull a one eighty.
Yep. We've, we've got truck templates with trailers.
Have you gotta deal with, uh, M dot to open that up?
If we do anything in the M dot right away.
You gotta deal with M dot?
Yep.
I already did that, technically. Maybe, oh, maybe I didn't. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. It's too many public hearings tonight. Sorry? So there's a couple of things, I don't know what you guys are thinking, but there's a couple of things that I have concerns with the outdoor storage part of it. If we're gonna add buildings, why wouldn't we remove it, especially if it's non-conforming use? I think we need to consider moving the gate back and I think Eileen is correct, we need to have a professional landscape plan. Even for the old part of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say it, it, it's, um, it's the length of the property. Right. So, um, the other question I had is, and I, I don't know if I heard Ed correctly, that M dot has not weighed in on this because there are, what, already was an existing curb cut, so I, I don't know if they're required to, but, um.
As they expand the business, asking them to review it?
Is there? We don't typically do that.
I mean, I'm not too concerned about the curb cut. I'm more concerned about backing that gate off a bit, then we can eliminate some safety issues. You can make your motion.
Sure.
If there's any other comments or if you guys have any other questions for the applicant?
Um, my motion would be to approve the site plan approval as written. Um, with the conditions that outdoor storage goes away and with, we have a professional landscape architect make a plan along the whole perimeter or building side. That's a very professional, uh, motion if anyone wants to make it a little nicer.
Friendly amendment, a, a condition for building three, obviously. Conditional on approval of the, of the board for the text amendment.
But I love that they're doing crushed concrete there. That will be really nice for water flow and everyone always wants to pave and this will be better for the wetlands too.
Yeah, you did a site plan.
Oh, yes, yes. It was for both.
Friendly consideration on an amendment is also to take into account modification of that point where the building and the fence meet to allow firefighter, um, access consistent with the comment from the fire marshal. Perfect.
And I would add to the landscape plan that that would be again, subject to the township staff and, um, approval, unless you wanna see it again, you can have it come back for the planning commission, but you could have it. They submit a comprehensive landscape plan compliant with the ordinances, um, and to this township satisfaction.
You wanna read that back to us?
So if the board were to, I'm sorry if I can come in, if the board approves that, though, I think it has to come back to the planning commission for us to waive it. Or, I mean, we, it, it feels odd to me that we would be waiving um, this requirement without actually seeing the plan.
So. The landscape plan?
Yeah, I think you can, you can waive the, the doors facing the road issue now, conditioned upon the board approving the text amendment. And then you would require as part of the special land use and site plan approval that they submit a comprehensive landscape plan that would be approved by Ed or the township staff. Right, so you, you can do it in one step. You, you may, if you want, if you wanna have oversight of that, you can have them come back with the landscape plan for you to consider it. But you can also delegate that to the township, um, to the township staff for their consideration and approval.
Would you be willing to make a friendly amendment to yours, asking that they bring it back to the PC?
I'd be happy to make that friendly amendment.
But I don't wanna complicate the life here.
That's what we, that's essentially what we asked for the text amendments, we might as well do it.
Plus, it's like only reading half a book. You wanna read the whole thing, right?
Okay, so we have a motion. You wanna read that back one more time, Ed? Make sure we all know we're.
Special land use and site plan approval with the condition outdoor storage area is removed and professional landscape plan is submitted and comes back for approval to the planning commission. Conditional on the text amendment being approved by the township board and conditional that all comments by the township attorney, engineer and fire chief are addressed.
I, I would like to make a friendly amendment to move the gate back. That's where I think we would need to discuss it a little bit. Um, you said that, that green space between Building Road and the parking lot was roughly fifty feet?
Correct.
Could we move it back to the fifty-foot mark? What are you guys' thoughts?
I think, I think we figure out the maximum sized vehicle that they're gonna put through there. When we make sure that's entirely off the road before the gate is placed. Whether they put two gates there, one for one side and the other, or whatever, if it's someone or another, yes. Nobody wants to have a trailer hanging out in the road. That's not good.
If the gates move back, would it be enough turning radius for your coming? Cause once you enter the project, if you move the gate back.
I, I would suggest they move it back to have.
Roughly fifty feet, so we could, he could make an acceptable or not.
If they say, well, we're only gonna get this size trailer in there. Limited, they can also limit it to that. There's ways to do it, but I don't want it. We, I have to measure.
Understandable, yeah.
Did you say you couldn't move it without talking to M dot, or is that just the curb cut?
Anything done in the right way cannot be added or subtracted without M dot. And honestly, they're so, so busy when you think of how many jobs are on M dot rules to try to review something that's not really gonna have anything that's really six months on. And I went to high school with her when.
So could we maybe have friendly amendment to the motion be that the driveway needs the engineers' approval? Would you be willing to take that on?
Yeah, you could do a, a performance type requirement where you say as, as needed to make sure that no part of a vehicle or trailer will impede traffic or hang out into the road. And then leave it at, in Rob's court and my court to review that and make sure that that happens.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Let me know when you're done writing that and I'll have you read it back again.
February just summarized as driveway means engineer performance requirements.
There we go. So we have a motion. Is there any support?
I'm sorry, cause there've been so many amendments. Can I just ask, so does the motion say open air storage is prohibited?
Outdoor storage area removed.
And because there are other places on the plan where it says open air storage, so I just was just trying to make sure we were on the same page. We weren't talking just about that location.
It's just the location along the west, any of the plans that say open air storage, that's from previous submitted.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Second?
All right, we have a motion, we have support. Ed, would you like to do a roll call vote?
Broad? Yes. Chelsea Sladen?
Yes.
Twyman?
Yes.
LaPran?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Any planning commission comments?
Well, I have an update for you guys from last night, the board meeting.
Yeah.
We got a signed agreement for the parking, the Kitzin parking.
Can it be discussed?
Yes, it's going on the website. I do know if it got posted yet. The, uh, parking agreement, if it got posted. You don't know. It was a closed session, so I think I should wait till it's posted, just to be sure.
You tease us with there's an agreement?
But it will be posted on the website. I think I'm good, but I just don't wanna get in trouble.
But there is an agreement.
There's an agreement and it's signed, so.
All right.
And I'm trying to drive you guys to the website more, so.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Yes, first, I'm gonna, looking at getting a site plan review course from Michigan Association Planning to have them come in, so it'll be about a four to five hour course. I've taken it instead of making you all go to Frankenmuth. Seeing about having them come in and maybe a course over just planning commission, uh, zoning board appeals in general.
But they have a water park over there.
They have two of them now.
We could get, we could make it an outing now.
I grew up next to Frankenmuth, I don't wanna go back. Uh, secondly, zoning ordinance review. We're gonna be setting up a subcommittee between the planning commission, zoning board appeals and township board. Ordinance hasn't been gone through since nineteen ninety-six. It needs to, there's a lot of stuff that are outdated. Today, we were looking through it, there's sections that talk about properties that have well and septic or public water and sewer, but we have properties that are mixed, so the ordinance doesn't address it. It's time, there's a lot like this that could be addressed.
Are you going to create that committee or do you need volunteers?
I'll, I'll reach out.
Okay.
And we'll need to set up a date, so I'll reach out in the morning, so I'll have times to start reviewing it, so.
Is there something for next month?
No. So we could, yeah, the next meeting we could.
Okay.
But I was kinda thinking about maybe having that as a day for the training, if we can schedule it.
Oh, yeah, we could do that too. Do we have any applicants?
We have two.
Had someone reach out to me today saying they were gonna apply.
Just have them fill in applications, send it to Jim Scales, not Jim Scales, Jim Alice, and then he'll send it to me and then wait until June first, we're trying to.
June, June one's the deadline? Okay.
Trying to get more people to apply.
Cool. I appreciate everybody's time and commitment to this and thank you. We'll go, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming.